Meeting come door. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for its standings, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we don't have a prayer.
Dear Lord, we thank you for this day and all that you do for us. Please bless us all who are here and help us in making good decisions for our borough. We ask this in your name, Lord Jesus, amen.
Roll call.
Bob Marlet.
Rudson.
Scott Ketchell.
Here.
Lisa Nudson.
Here.
Steve Nudson.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Eddie.
Yep.
Jim Still.
Here.
Does anybody here have anything for the, for us to hear?
Hi, my name's Steve Orange. I live here in West Town. I got a couple concerns here. One of them is, one of the crosswalk signs that has the guy, when you have a green one, isn't working down there. It's across from the post office right there on the same side as, I don't know if it was the Elks Club there or something. It's not working.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that needs fixed. I wanted to see if you guys could do something about your jail employees parking downtown around the post office, okay? Because there's supposed to be a two-hour time limit on them. They're not putting money in the meter to sit there. Plus, they're taking up so many spaces that the businesses within that area don't have any room for their customers to come in, especially the post office, because that post office gets busy. So, and those jail employees are just parking there probably eight, 10 hours a day, if you know what I mean. And they're taking up a bunch of space down there that the customers for the businesses there could actually be using and stuff. And you know there's a two-hour time limit. I don't know if you guys get away with that or not. That's one of my concerns. Another one is your sheriff's cars, they got a sticker on the back. It's a, they call it, it's a fascist sticker because it says "In God We Trust," they've got a blue line. So, that's actually considered a fascist sticker because only blue lives matter. Okay, plus "In God We Trust." It's separation of church and state, I'm sorry. Okay, just like your prayer you did today. Okay? There's something else. Oh, the condemned houses around West Town, they're not being torn down? I seen a couple of them there, they're just sitting there. You know what I mean?
So, because it's condemned doesn't necessarily mean it can be torn down in the borough.
Well, it doesn't.
No.
Oh, okay.
So, when they're condemned, that means they got violations that nobody can live in them. They do have the right to go in and make those repairs, but that's the only reason they're allowed to go in those buildings.
But they're not fixing them up then.
But if they're still in private hands, we can't tear them down.
Okay, okay. Something else here too. That was the main one here. But your religion started, Lisa. The newest religion, Satanic Temple. Anybody want to belong to them?
No.
Can I bring him in here and say a prayer too? Would that be all right? You got a prayer from a Christian?
We'll take it into consideration.
Well, then, I'll just see if I can't file a lawsuit against you on, it's a violation of the Constitution. Okay?
It's not a violation of the Constitution.
Separation of church and state.
It's not in the Constitution.
Nope.
We did some legal research prior to implementing the prayer in school, and we're able to determine that the U.S. Supreme Court in 2014 has said it's okay to start a meeting with a prayer as long as it doesn't denigrate, proselytize, or betray an impermissible government purpose. So...
Hey, I must read something different. That ain't what mine says. I think I was at there. Yeah.
But as far as the sheriff's cars, that's not us. You need to go to county for that. We have no control.
You don't have no control over...
No, that's all the county level.
Oh, oh, another problem there for me. Why is the tax collector not in this building?
She decided to move.
That ain't what I heard, sorry. That is not what I heard.
It's the truth.
We didn't, I detect her.
We didn't detect her.
I understand, I understand that, but anyway, what I heard with, are you charging people to hold an office in this building or any county building?
She was paying the rent.
Yeah, paying rent, same, yeah, paying rent.
We were paying her, she was paying her rent.
Does anybody else pay rent?
No.
Everybody out of the borough employee, she's an out-of-borough employee.
Oh, she's not...
She is an out-of-borough employee.
Oh!
She's an elected candidate.
But she collects taxes for the borough.
And for the school.
And for the school district.
Because she's not... Okay, okay.
Hey, Mr. Orange.
Okay, thanks.
Bye now. I'm going to turn this over to the borough manager now. Oh, oh, yeah. I have a motion to pass this to the Senate agenda.
Set them up.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Now, I'm going to turn over to the borough manager.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Number one, digester, number one, repair status. We did put out bid requests for the initial phase of the repair of the digester. We received one before the deadline. We received a second one, which you'll see on my screen here, they came in afterwards. Now, the reason they came in afterwards, they coordinated with Eads ahead of time and said they were having trouble getting their quotes from the subcontractors. They let Eads know it would be a day late, which it was. So, they did coordinate it with our engineering firm first. So, that doesn't stop the borough council from making a decision. But the first thing we need to do is, the borough council needs to vote to add the Snyder Environmental quote to the agenda and to discuss it.
Is it a motion?
Set it up.
Second?
Set.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, so you have two quotes, one from UGI, it's UGS, isn't it?
USG.
USG, so that's actually USG. For $597,500 for the removal of the roof, sludge removal and cleaning, same process for Snyder Environmental, it's $532,750. It's about $65,000 less. I did talk to Eads about quality of work between the two, and they provided me some information that based on quality of work alone, they would recommend USG receive the quote. They've dealt with the other company as well, but between the two for quality of work, they recommend USG. But it is council's decision to go for the quality of work or for the lowest bidder. Now, this will probably be paid for out of the loan from the county. I received back the legal comments from Mark Remy today. I'll send those to county tomorrow. But that's the initial pot of money I'm assuming that we will use to pay to remain our loan. So, the question tonight is, that's why I got the two asterisks, is which contract does the council want to approve? But before I turn over to you, I'm going to turn over to Eads, see if they have any additional comments or information from council to make a decision. Anything else, Lucas?
Make a motion, we go with the one that we recommend.
Hold on, hold on, Eddie. I turn it over to them first.
I think your comments addressed everything that we had laid out for you, Kim. You did an excellent job to explain that. I was sensitive to the, quote, "receive a day late than the proposal," but I chose to move it forward anyway, knowing that they put us on notice that they were waiting for some contract in price. And yes, I have to stand forth that USG was asked to provide some references, and I think their reference list far exceeded the reference list that was provided by Snyder Environmental. So, on that, on those two points alone, I think we have to stick to the recommendation of USG even though it's more pricier.
You might want to take action to reject the late bid in that you only have, then you only have one bid that you have to consider.
Does it make a difference that they coordinated with us, Eads, ahead of time that it was late?
I mean, I haven't seen, I didn't review the bid documents, so I don't know, but, I mean, were these bids or were they, were they quotes?
Co-stars quotes.
Co-stars quotes.
And I have them on here if you need to see them. I mean, I have no problem with them.
So, did they give us any timelines for having boots on around?
Neither one of them were provided any timeline on that. But they, they do want to have this done this summer, and it's doable within this construction season? Yes, they can have this done in the June, July, August timeframe.
This is USG.
I make a motion, we go with the recommended quote.
Uh, second?
The recommended quote of USG?
Yeah. I don't think, we've spent this much money, we want to make sure it's done right.
I have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
All right. Number two, monthly work session. We still have the one for the 25th of April, 5:30 PM, still on our schedule. May is TBD. Would you guys like to discuss some days in May, or you want to wait till the May council meeting? We can, we can discuss it later. If you want to go to the president, he can call the special meeting, call the special work session, and we'll leave a date. It's up to you guys.
You want to talk to him?
Let's wait until May.
It's on.
Thank you.
Okay, grants. City Fire Department, DLI, is requesting support from council for a DCED grant request. Let me find, is it here to show you? Jim, you want to say something, I assume?
Sure. This is to apprise you of our intention to apply for what's known as a American Rescue Plan Act, COVID-19 multi-purpose community facilities grant program. The minimum amount that could be awarded would be $250,000, maximum would be $2 million. Very competitive, obviously, this is federal money that is being provided to the state through the foresight of our federal legislators that we're able to move it through. Deadline is next week. I will be asking for a letter of support from you folks as soon as the estimate is known for the work that is being proposed for city. It's to look at a pretty comprehensive upgrade of HVAC, electrical, extra improvements and site details as well. City will be required to do a number of problematic things in conjunction with this particular program, but we're apprising you folks of this opportunity, but I did not want to see pass this by, because I think it's going to be around, obviously, with the urban...
Okay, I'm familiar with what Jim's talking about. I was there today helping his crew with it in the building. They went through the building, and they picked off things like air conditioning, heating units, windows, everything else. The city had took the initiative, applied for this grant, and they're prepared to do what they have to do on their behalf if the grant's granted. I'm all favor of that.
Is it a match?
No match.
No match.
No match required.
They're prepared to go ahead with it if the grant's...
Yeah, there's, there's substantial things that the city will have to do programmatically to address the requirements.
To direct some financial backing there for them.
Okay, thank you.
Do you need, do we need to take a vote?
They're going to have to. So, here is, the reason I went to get this, this is the same grant we applied for for the community center that got turned down because of the depth and amount of work that was involved. That's all I'm going to say is, that's the same one. There's a lot of engineering stuff that went into it. Does the grant cover all the fees and everything that go in with it, the engineering and all that stuff?
So, we're getting contractor estimates, and they will be provided to us. They're doing that as far as progress.
What, what cost is going to have to pay for by the borough? Anything?
Nothing required at this time.
At this time, we would like the future. I mean, because this is for city, this isn't for the borough.
Yeah, correct. I'm not aware that it is going to require any, you know, borough funds. It's primarily for a, if you will, an entity that is associated with you folks.
We need a letter of support, is that what you're seeing?
There will be a letter of support forthcoming. I don't know what the amount would be at this time.
I mean, as far as from us, would you need?
I would like a letter of support from you if you have such a little...
I make a motion to you for a little letter of support from the borough of support.
Is that a motion?
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
You need to copy the minutes, Jim, right?
Oh, that would be great, yes.
Let me see, so you need to copy the minutes by April 20. All right, now we're down to recycling stats. They did conduct the weekend recycling not too long ago, a few weeks ago. I believe we had eight people show up that week, that weekend on that Saturday from like 8:00 to 12:00. Cost of borough about $300. So, they are showing up. The DCNR pool study survey results are completed, so that has been done. We've paid the fee of the study, which is $31,000. We have gone back to DCNR and requested our reimbursement of the $15,000 for that $31,000 cost. So, we're just waiting to receive the money back from DCNR. Teams for negotiations are ongoing. We had another meeting today. The next meeting with them is scheduled for 15 May, which is five weeks from now. Fire Department safety inspections are going to start. Originally, it was this summer. We had a fire meeting last night, and they're saying it should probably start one January of 2025. That's the goal of the fire department, to get those processes started and up and running.
I do have a question to that, okay? I'm all in my favor over anything, let's get that straight to you off the bat. But is this taking the place of what we used to have the crew go out and do the occupancy permit, or is this going farther than that?
I think it's just the occupancy permit. That's, that's the one I think.
So, they're not going to be out there going anything where we could be potentially involved in a lawsuit because we don't have certified people in charge?
Not that I know of. I'd have to go back to the chief, he's the ones pushing it, talking to him. Mark Lee, Sean, you know anything about that?
I do not. Last night was, well, within the last week was the first that I was notified of these I had made the last couple of fire committee meetings due to work, so...
Why shouldn't this be handled through codes?
I think it's per your ordinance, it's the fire chief that's involved.
It is the fire chief.
Okay.
Mark's right about that, but I do have a couple more questions here about it. If it's the same as it was back before, McKay dropped, remember, he was fire chief, he didn't want to deal with it. But when Chief Powell was on board, he had crew, and they went out to the restaurants, places where people gone reated, and they checked for this, the regular fire hazard, like lock doors, lighting, all that kind of stuff. And also the occupancy permit, because each place in town, restaurants, bars, whatever, there's an occupancy, and he allowed so many people in, okay? And if they received, had the seating capacity for that, and I don't think they issued an permit, and there was a fee for it. But they didn't do anything like inspect wiring, anything of that nature. And once again, this is kind of new to me, because I've heard like three of them stories now in the past week, all right? Like I say, if it's just the occupancy permit, fine, I have no issues with it whatsoever because my understanding is that permit, when it's going to be a fire equipment, is that correct?
Every, every time, yeah.
Okay, I'm very fine with that. Now, one more thing. This was brought up about a year ago, which I was totally in favor of, the occupancy permit, okay? So, we just want to start things in. But at that time, we could find their records around here, and if you can talk to Rudson about this, because that's who I spoke to, but we couldn't find any records of any business establishment that they had seating charts for. So, how could we go and inspect the place? You know what I mean? So, if that's the issue, who's going to go around and measure the building, see how many people can be in there at one time or whatever? I mean, that stuff kind of needs to be placed before they start this.
Correct.
Because we want everything going down and go before them to go ahead and start. So, what I'm asking for, let's get these answers here first and go from there. If everything's fine, I'm all for it. I just want to make sure they're protected too. And of course, if the fire department can sue you for something, that's the worst next step, obviously, but...
You'll have to have a meeting with the other mom. You'll order what it is. I mean, they got stuff from other fire companies to have it, do the inspections.
Sean, you're the deputy chief for everything I say here, does that make sense to you?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's what, we don't want to be held liable for lawsuits. I guess, but last night, Assistant Chief Shook brought forms, forms that they use in Anarongo County, and the fire department does those inspections down there, just as a basis for what we would want to look at.
Well, how about maybe we could get us a copy of that, make a review of that, come up with something sort of...
Kim, did you get a copy of those last night?
Hello, if you say a chance for you to... All right. Well, let's see, we're getting one right now. David, you know him here, yeah? Take me a time to look at that and read it back up again?
All I was saying is, it's under discussion with the fire chief. We already know we have to change the ordinances, we know it has to go through law and ordinance, we already know it has to go through council. This is just an FYI, and we're in the process of researching it to figure out what we could do to move forward with it, to help the fire department with some additional funds.
Well, that's fine, I'm very fine with that.
So, we would put this part of chapter 24, Mark, would that, would this would fit in?
Well, you already have an existing ordinance. I mean, I haven't looked at it in a long time. You probably want to take a look at that, take a look at what they got from the other county and see if they mesh.
Can we do that at the next hall orders?
I would, I would, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
We just want to make sure you're protected, Sean, that's the questions I have.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Military banners. We have about 30 applicants, there's 25 spots, but I talked to them, they're going to put double-sided on some of the banners to make sure everybody that submitted a picture gets put on there. It'll be about a month before they get here, and then we'll be able to put them up downtown. Ben's guys will put them up downtown, so that's update for the military banners. Eads, wastewater collections, commercial EDU recommendations. I'll turn it over to Eads right now to possibly give some recommendations on this. But before I do that, I went and saw John Brenman this afternoon to try to grease the skids with Senator Ward's office for any grants that we apply for in the near future. And he told me that whenever we do submit another grant, that we get out and coordinate with him for a meeting with Senator Ward and council members, so that we can get the proper support to the political side down in Harrisburg to try to push some of these grants through, because it hasn't been done in the past. So, I'm trying to coordinate it where we get some political clout instead of just turning the paper up and crossing our fingers. Now, I was talking to John about some of these issues. He said his flat rate fee in Granville Township is $140 a quarter. The flat rate fee in Dairy Township, I believe, is $135 a quarter. So, that's just additional information for you guys to think about as you move forward. Go ahead, Lucas, if you have anything.
We don't have any recommendations finalized quite yet. We are coordinating with borough staff on their EDU calculation research that they've done, comparing current charged EDUs versus the potential for some of our commercial users of what they could be charged. We're also working through budget projections. Now that we got one of the big items, we actually have a line item for that, for budgeting out, because in the EDU recommendation, it's sort of the whole billing cycle and what the rates could be. So, we're trying to work a couple alternative options for you folks to review, and that's, we're getting some of these final larger budget items that we sort of have to project out over the next five or 10 years, because we don't want to, you know, jump at the rates right off the bat if it's something that, with like the million dollar loan from the county, we can sort of spread, spread that out with payments over the years. So, we don't have anything pulled together quite yet, but we are working with borough staff to get that, all that information in a report.
I think you'll have that ready by next council meeting?
That's our hope. Yep. Obviously, the digester number was a big part of that, you know, it could have been $2 million just as easy if it was, you know, $600,000. So, we're working through that, and some of the other big ticket items, we're getting some harder numbers to work with.
If we get some numbers by the 25th of April, we can pool in the work sessions. We'll take the council, so we'll see what we can do on that. Number 10, town hall meeting. Do you guys want to have a town hall meeting? That's, that's all I got it on here for is, do you want to have one or not?
Phil, I'm, I'm for a town hall meeting maybe a little bit later in the year.
Well, yeah, I think so.
So...
All right, we'll look at the dates later on then for a bigger... Number 11 and number 12, proposed new EMS building possibility, fire department vehicle maintenance plan. Those have been asked to be put on the agenda after it was published, so I need a vote from council to discuss number 11 and number 12.
Set it up.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right. Proposed new EMS building possibility. I haven't been in the loop on this, but I was briefed last night, the fire committee was briefed last night on the possibility, it's just a possibility of having a new EMS building for the borough of West Town. Whether it's just a police station or, you know, a compilation of police and fire, that's yet to be determined. The briefing last night was kind of, I don't know, Scott, Scott was there, it's kind of hasty meeting, he was asking for information or approval that was too soon in the process, in other words. Yeah, that's right, Steve was there too. So, bottom line is, it's in discussion, it's in the mayor's hands, the mayor's working this with the chief and his, her staff. Is it the civil service commission, or is it the police advisory board that's working this?
The police advisory board.
Okay, police advisory board. Okay, so they're, they got the light, the lead on this. That, that's what, just mentioned to you there.
There's nothing, nothing to be discussed.
That's what I was getting, there's nothing other than that, I don't have anything else. Fire Department vehicle maintenance plan. Fire Department Committee voted to bring this to council. Let's see, fire department. Come on, there we go. Vehicle maintenance plan for firefighting equipment. So, the new quote is $13,137.41 for a year. The quote went down $4,000 something because the guy that does it actually moved closer to West Town, so you don't got to pay all the hotel lodging and all that stuff. The, the other question on here that was brought up by the fire department is, uh, is it worth spending the two thousand, one hundred forty-seven thirty-eight on engine eleven, thirty-two, three? I guess it's going away or something, Bob, what's it, do you know, or Sean, do you know what the deal is on that one?
The plan for that engine was to use it for a grant for replacement.
Is it, is it still in service?
Uh, for, to haul manpower. That was Chief Douglas's decision.
Alright, so then I think, adjusted to ten thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars and three cents. So they would put a vehicle maintenance plan in place, correct me if I'm wrong, Sean, for all the vehicles but that, and the cost would be ten thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars and three cents. Now, I'm not sure what part of money they're taking this out of. Kind of talked to last night about specialty tax, I guess, maybe there's money left to our butt, but again, that's a, a council's decision, um, on funding this.
Okay, one question that, once again, I'm not against this, let's get that clear. One question I do have in this, and I'm familiar with the maintenance programs, because when I was still riding fire trucks, like, we had one there also. If maintenance man, cause then does his thing, gets over, does his service work to the equipment, and he finds something wrong that's going to put it out of service or possibly cause a problem down the road, uh, who's paying the bill to fix it?
I would think that would be up to the fire.
Yeah, that's fire department. It's either going to be done by the fire department.
I'm asking, I'm just asking.
I know, or they're going to come to us and ask for help, it's one of the two, I mean, I can't give you definite answer right now, Bob, I have no idea. It just depends on cost, let's say it's a thousand bucks, the fire department probably eat it. If it's twenty thousand, they may come to borough for help, I don't know what answer would be on that.
So I think part of the challenge here too is, you know, we have an obligation to buy a fire truck right now. We don't know what those payments are going to be yet, because the loan has, agreement hasn't been reached yet. So I think we should kind of table this discussion and see where we land on the finance side of things, um, with the loan, to see if there's funding available.
Do you don't want to do the maintenance program?
What I'm saying is, I think it should be tabled until we know the financial situation of the fire specialty tax.
Then why was I told to bring it to council?
Well, a little bit more thought on, on the process and, um, you know, to be honest with you, if we're taking out a one point six million dollar loan and there's no plan for the loan or no agreed interest rate, we've got to know what those payments are, to make sure we got enough money to pay for the fire truck.
Well, everyone's waiting.
But, Kim, if the money's not there, you tell me where it's coming from.
Why'd you tell me to put it on the thing, the agenda, that's what I'm asking, I thought it was something the council wanted to discuss and make a decision on. But you're saying, take, look, we could have done that before, until we got some more information. I'm not mad about just, just saying, why'd we do it? Alright, next thing, mayor, what do you got, mayor? Or no, fire chief is next.
Fire chief. Uh, city responded to twenty calls for service in the month, month of March, heritage responded to sixteen. Write down on everything if anybody wants to see it.
I have it, I'm going to put it on the screen, just so they can see it.
Other than that, I have nothing.
So basically, what happens in the past is, you know, they read the tab off, but it's really hard to copy all this, so we get it on the minutes. So Bob's going to start giving something to me on the screen, so I can give you guys an idea of what we are tracking for the different fire calls, and fire stations. And that's good data for the fire, for the town hall meeting as well, because we can build our charge with that. Mayor! Sorry, that's your name. Say, mayor.
Okay, um, this is my, um, first quarter of twenty twenty-four, um, marriage fees. If you have any questions, there you probably have. I have the honor of, um, being, uh, are you okay? I'm being invited up to, uh, the Summit Children's Center. And I don't know if you're aware of where that is, it's, it's up beside the, um, Geisinger Medical Center on Green Avenue. And, uh, just to tell you a little bit about what goes on up there, uh, of which I wasn't aware of till, uh, I started spending time there, is that, uh, there are close to two hundred children that are up there from, uh, three counties. And, uh, each, uh, each age group is separated, and they have developmental programs for each. And, uh, it's just a wonderful place, uh, the staff is wonderful, uh, the children, uh, as soon as they see me, they usually run over to, they're getting to know me pretty, pretty well up there. But they are, they're, it's, uh, it's just a really nice program. And if you know of anybody that needs this preschool, uh, needs, uh, some, uh, loving care, uh, I would highly recommend the Summit, the Summit Center. Uh, I don't know if it was mentioned, but, uh, police advisory board will be meeting next week, uh, on Tuesday the sixteenth. And a property management meeting will be Wednesday the seventeenth. So I'm sure we'll have lots to do at both of those meetings, we'll get back to you with the results. That's all I have, thank you, any other questions?
Dave, unfair statistics for March, um, calls for service was five hundred, um, ninety-six traffic citations issued, um, thirty-six non-traffic, a hundred and twenty-nine warnings issued, and sixteen parking tickets. I don't have a drug report, this month, our, uh, drug investigators had training, he was at training last week, and he's still at training this week. So I think there's work on that. Just want to mention the K nine grant that was submitted, um, we were asking for a hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-six. They did an initial, uh, review of that application, um, it's still in the process, they haven't awarded the grant yet, but, I was talking to Lisa Stahlmaker who helped write the grant, she said it's usually assigned, but they got back to us, they're discussing the grant with us, um, and it looks like they're willing to fund it, uh, at a hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three. That would cover the, the vehicle, which is the big thing, around eighty-nine thousand, and the dog itself would be around twelve thousand, five hundred, so. They're willing to, uh, to fund those things, they did exclude a couple of the, the smaller items we had in the grant. What we'd like to do is maybe start putting some feelers out for, to cover those other items with donations or some kind of fundraising. I don't want to go forward with that, um, unless I have some idea of what council's thinking as far as the grants. We should hear something probably by the end of summer, whether we're awarded the grant, but I said, uh, Lisa said it looks pretty good for, for us to get that grant, so. So I just wanted to get some input from council before we go out and, and put some feelers out in the community or do any kind of fundraising for the other items. The other, the items that were covered were things, consume, consumable things like food, uh, vet care, those type of things are not going to cover with the grant. So we would have to find, funding to cover those things. But, uh, what I said, the vehicle would be covered, that's, that's a big item. Lisa said it's rare to get vehicles with grants, so. So if the council has any input on that, we'd appreciate it, just so we know where, where to go with that.
I think it'd be good if, if you want to go around and find out, like, if there were vets or something, if they're willing to help us out and also, you know, anybody if would, uh, want to contribute food or, you know, money towards. Food, show up for the dog, I, I don't see anything wrong with that, I mean.
We do have a volunteer group too that we worked with before, that's going to help us out with fundraising. It's in the office, it's in this group.
Do we have an officer that's going to be working with the dog?
Um, we, I mean, we haven't officially appointed anyone yet, but, uh, we have an officer that's interested in it, he actually helped put the grant together and wrote the grant, so.
I make a motion, we give you a permission to get the group or whatever you had before, or whatever, to get what you can, that's.
What second?
One in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Folks?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And that's pretty much all I have for now, there'll be a couple things for the next session.
Oh, the next one's recreation board.
I do, I'm still writing Dave's name. So Dave applied for the grant, for the K nine, which is LSA grant, local shares account, I think. There was three grants that were applied for with that same one, one was Dave's, one was for the wastewater treatment plant for the storm water, for six hundred thousand, to help with the cost for I D I, and the other one was for six hundred thousand for Heritage Fire Department, their building, to, to do the same thing cities kind of do, is to renovate their building. So they're all in the same one, so like Dave said, they, they will make an announcement at their earliest end of the summer, so all three of those are in the same pot, so we don't know when they're going to come through. Recreation board, right now we have about nine thousand, three hundred dollars in donations for the pool. Is there any change from, is Caitlin here?
Yeah.
Anything changed over that?
Nope, that's the answer.
Okay, so nine thousand, three hundred donations, which is great, I think it's more than we had last year. The poll opening date is five June from three to seven, but I can't remember.
It would say open from that point on.
Yeah, yeah, I can't remember, did we have to vote for that? Did it say what the date? Yeah, I don't think we needed to. No, we don't have to do it, yeah.
It's going to be a freeze zone.
Yes, yeah, so the, so the poll's going to open on five June, and then from there, the rest of the summer, it'll be open until it closes. And the video cameras have arrived, they're down at the codes office, um, and I know Matt's coordinated with our guys and back and forth to get those set up down there, I think they're going down Friday or something.
Yeah, but Ben said that would work.
They're all anxious to get going on, so, uh, we'll get those up and, and, uh, you want to leave the, I think Ben will take care of the cameras, get them down there, you don't have to do anything, they'll, they'll get them down there.
The rest of the stuff is there, right?
Yeah, 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 and they picked up everything they needed.
How, regular hours of operation figured out?
It's the same from last year, it's just whatever it is.
Kim, is council aware of the physical, like, donations we've gotten so far?
I don't know if they're, where are the physical, if you want, if you want to read them, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't know if everybody's aware, city is going to donate a deep freeze for us down there, it was kind of ruined through the winter. Overhead door is, um, Kim has four doors in installation for free. We're in the process of that, the academy is going to rem, well, the borough guys are going to remove the
cold, cold toys.
And take them to the academy and paint them for us so far. Caitlin, was that two thousand included in that total amount of donation from the aisles?
Yes, and we have other sponsors that have said they're going to sponsor, we just don't physically have the checks yet, so that number is going to go up dramatically over the next seven months.
Yeah, I have like eight of them out as well.
So up on the screen, Lisa's, the stuff we talked about, the, all the stuff that's pretty much been done and they're working on.
They've been doing a great job down there.
Yeah, like so far at the pool, Ben, weather, let's see, ED ramped, doing that, get the camera top, pool repairs, expansion joint filter, safety, finish repair, chemical doors, there's a ton of stuff they're working on down there. There's the freezer.
Yep.
And then, uh, it's going to, we change these dates, obviously, depending on the five June date, we're going to rework those dates.
Attorney General, we're the boroughs, you're listening?
Thank you. Chapter nine, one ninety-two, septic ordinance, that's been advertised for tonight. So what this has to do with is septic systems in the borough, which really are not supposed to have, but they do exist. But they're completely unregulated because we don't have any ordinance regulated. So this is an ordinance that provides for inspections, maintenance requirements, um, rehabilitation where necessary of on-lot systems. It allows the borough to get involved if there's a malfunctioning system, uh, that is creating like a hazard or a nuisance. And, um, of course, like penalties to comply with it, so. We've been working on this with codes for a few months now, but it's, it's advertised for adoption tonight.
I think there's only four septics in the borough?
Correct.
It's only four in the whole borough, but it needs to be done, because those four are important to deal with.
Can they not hook up, is that why they're there, or?
They were grandfathered, they've been there, like, you got concrete, has one. They've just been there and we can't force them to join city to work, so, because we can't, they're already established. We just need to get them on schedule, getting them pumped out, and to verify that they are working septic tanks. This would force them to do that, and essentially DEP is probably going to make us do it anyway, so this way we're proactive, we're showing DEP we're taking the steps to do what's necessary before they force us to do it. All of the other local municipalities, Dairy, Caterer, Granville, they already have these in place.
You, you say we can't force them to hook up?
As far as I know, we can not force them, because they've already had working septic tanks in place for.
I mean, we can look into that, but I still think we should adopt this ordinance, because their septic systems are, are there.
Yeah, now, if they malfunction and they're not working, or, then we could force them, but if they're working systems, I don't think we should force them to hook up.
I make a motion to be adopted for now, second. Check into red, another layer.
Second. One in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Folks?
Next on the agenda is Portnoy ordinance, so this goes back to, um, uh, the borough appointing this Portnoy law firm to collect, uh, delinquent taxes. So just to refresh your memory, next, starting next year, instead of delinquent taxes, going to the county tax claim bureau, and through that whole process, the borough's going to have this Portnoy law firm be their delinquent tax collector. So what you need to do is adopt this ordinance, essentially appointing them as your attorney for that limited purpose, and establishing a list of fees. You know, what they do is they, um, you know, they put, pass these fees on to the delinquent taxpayers, which, you know, the county tax claim bureau does, does that too. But this would just establish a, a list of fees, uh, that this Portnoy firm can charge for these collections.
Mark, is there any hidden fees for this Portnoy?
No, I mean, as long as we have a certain number of accounts.
As long as they're fifty.
Yeah.
As long as we have fifty delinquents, there was no fees to the borough, but we've got a hundred, two hundred, I mean, it's a ton. It's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, last month's check.
Mark, you, you mentioned, uh, a tax bureau, is that state federal or what?
That's a county office.
A county office.
Right, like, they're the ones who do the annual, you know, the tax upset sale and the free and clear sale.
Okay, and then, this, what, what, they're a private, a private entity?
Exactly, right, they're a, like a law firm that does this for a living.
Has there been any, uh, any background on them, how they operate?
Uh, we, you know, we did a, a phone call with, um, um, Kim and I, I forget who else is on the call, but they do this for a lot of municipalities, um, not in Mifflin County that I know of, but.
Is there, is there any of those municipalities that we could call for?
We could, D C E D came to see me a couple weeks ago and talked, we did talk about Portnoy, and they said they're a good organization, that a lot of people in state use it. Twenty-some municipalities, something like that, or thirty-some or more, use, use Portnoy to help.
To be honest with you, I would just be concerned about, um, how they would handle our citizenry, if there was any kind of a small harm or anything like that.
I don't.
I mean, I would hope not. I mean, I would hope not, and I would think not, but.
And there's laws like the Fair Debt Collection Practices Act that really limit what any debt collector could do, so.
I'm just trying to find the Portnoy data in my file. I know it's in one of these files I pulled up. Because they gave us a list of all the, here's Portnoy.
I was contacted before the meeting night by Commissioner Cody. And he was encouraging us to reach out to them before we make a haste, um, decision on this. I'm not sure, he didn't go into details with that. So I think, I think somebody should reach out to them to see what he has in mind. I'm not sure, we didn't have the time, time to talk. But he sent me a text and said he'd like to meet with us, so whatever that's worth.
Since you're in deadline, we have to notify them.
I don't believe that we're under a real time constraint. I mean, I think it would have to be obviously this year, but I don't think that it has to be done this month.
Do you think?
Well, it's too late this year for them to do twenty twenty-three's taxes.
Right.
So it's just gotta be done this year. So if you guys want to set up a meeting with the commissioners and discuss it.
I think it's, I had the same text, just.
Make a motion to table till we talk to the commissioners.
Yard sale ordinance, this is a, uh.
FYI.
Yeah.
The next one is that.
This is actually, uh, we, I found one that I had done for the borough back in twenty fifteen. I think, Matt, you might remember that.
I'm sorry?
The yard sale, yes, yeah. We had talked about it back in twenty fifteen. I don't, I think it never really got out of law and ordinance or never got advertised for adoption. The one I did is, is follows closely a borough's association model ordinance. And it would require, it limits the number of yard sales people can have. There's like a ten dollar application fee to have a yard sale, to get a permit. Two a year, I think, is the, um, limit. So it just, uh, you know, it's whether council wants to move forward with this.
Well, we got, we got the law ordinance meeting coming up next week, so we'll probably take, because when we discussed it at the last meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, Matt, we didn't have a copy of the ordinance?
Correct.
So he got it since then, so I think we'll just cover it next Thursday.
Yep.
And that's the same, talking about the handicap spot renewal fee, they're just FYIs as we work through.
It's the same thing Bob was talking about with the inspection of the buildings. It's FYI, it's in the works, in the process.
So before that, before next week, can we see, can I have a breakdown of the handicap? I want to see what it really cost. I want all the costs on doing a, with man hours and everything.
And that's that one short thing to talk about in the next session.
Thank you.
Well, I made a motion here, but nobody entertained it, so.
You, you don't have to make a motion for that, you just table it. It's no action taken. That's all you say is no action taken. You don't have to vote on it. Just no, no action taken. That's a legal thing, no, no action taken.
What's that, yard sale?
No, the meeting.
Holding off on that Portnoy decision. They could just say no action taken, that's fine.
I think a yard sale thing would have come up there in twenty fifteen because for those that do it all summer long.
Well, and I have two people in the streets every day.
Yeah.
Every day.
I think that's.
These are where they are. You drive mine do. And I'm sitting up by their in order, mine ain't yours.
Why, why only question when that is, why, why would you eliminate the two a year? I mean, if they want to keep paying the ten dollars.
Well, you're in law ordinance, right?
Yeah.
So we can talk about that next Thursday.
Okay.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
All right, new unfinished business number one, DEP INI fine. So our fine for not following the consent order for, or getting it done, I guess, basically. We've got to copy the wrong page. Anyways, the proper amount is forty-six thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars. So this is the consent order. And I said it to council already, you have it. I met with Eads today and the lawyer that's supporting us on this. He said, he recommends the council approve it. Because the stuff in there that I picked out with market stuff, it's not stuff that's gonna change anything, and it's stuff that they're not gonna want to change anyways. But the bottom line is, he said, he recommends we approve this consent order, we pay the fine of the forty-six thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And then we can go back to Dairy Township of Granville and bill them accordingly for their portion of the legal fee dealing with this. So it's actually number one and number two. Number one is the fine, you're approving the fine because you have to prove it for a check. Number two is actually approving the consent agenda because we have to sign it with council presidents, Lister, et cetera.
Kim. Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote.
What most did you make? Who made the motion?
Heavy.
Heavy, for which one? One or two or both?
Both.
Both, okay.
Yeah.
Now, the money, the forty-six thousand eight thirty-eight, I'm assuming right now that it's gonna be coming from the slip line project that we're postponing at Fifth Street. Because we have some money set aside in there, and I think that's where the money's coming from. Because it's all part of INI. Number three, sanitary mainline interceptor cleaning. Let me find that in here. I'll explain what this is here. So this line here, red, it's near Dairy Township. You got three twenty-two here on the left, you got, I think that's Kiss Creek. You got this right here, this big long line. Our equipment can't get in there and clean that out and service it because of the banks and the brush and stuff, so that's why we have a contractor doing this. The bottom line is, we can also bill part of this to Dairy because they use that same line. So it's all not gonna be paid by us. We'll bill Dairy accordingly. That's seven thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars. And that, that will also come out of the slip line project that would have the money set aside for that.
Any motion?
Have a move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote.
The DEP INI pump station IT upgrade. I'll let Lucas talk about that in a second because I think they're experts. But here, I want to show you this. So this pump station is very important for us because it obviously pumps the stuff along the lines. If it doesn't pump enough, then you get backflow and lots of other issues. So if you look at this picture here from, I think it was today or yesterday, I got it today. They went to go check the pumps, two of them, there's two pumps in that substation, pump station. Because they're not pumping the amount they should. So you can see they pulled this thing out, the pump, and you can see all the rags and stuff that people throw in the sewer system that's stuck in there. Here's the propeller and how it's all clogged and everything. This is what it looks, supposed to look like when it's cleaned out. The problem is, this pump was put in in two thousand nine, it's never been serviced. So we do have one extra pump on hand to pull this pump out and replace it with a new one. Once that's all hooked up, because we can't lose our pumping ability, the second one will get pulled out and we'll take a look at it. We don't know, excuse me, if we have to buy another pump or just maybe make parts to make one. But I talked to the guys today about it, and they said, right now, the pump guy says it would cost just as much to repair one as to buy one. But the bottom line is, we have one to replace this one. Once the other one comes out, they will make it, bring it back to council for a decision on what they want to do. This is all part of that INI piece. So this is why I turned over to Lucas, because this is the part we're talking about spending some money on. But there's no spending money on it until it's been serviced, and that's what they're doing now.
So there's been no preventive maintenance done since when, two thousand nine?
Two thousand nine.
Unreal.
Yep.
The IT upgrade is the ability to bring the flow monitoring information to the council meetings, just like you are today with the screen. The flow meters that you currently have out there are lacking the internet accessibility, and they're also the insertion type probes that are less accurate. And I apologize right now, but I'm gonna be talking about the Edgewater pump station sub basin over and over and over again for the next several weeks. Because that is a very small, manageable unit right now on behalf of the borough that is subject to the SSO discharges that puts you in violation with DEP. So if we can really focus on that little sub basin within the borough and bring a lot of additional and best accurate data to the table. We're going to be looking at solving a little problem before we get into the bigger problem. What it really does to us is this IT upgrade's gonna allow us to do net metering. Because obviously there's, the Dairy Township has three major interconnections coming into this sub basin with the pump station delivering it out. So the IT upgrade allows for the flow meters that are currently in the pump station to be made internet accessible. That's your, what we'd like to call is the queue out from the basin. But in order to figure the borough's contribution, we gotta subtract out the queue in from outside the municipality, which you're not responsible for. So this IT upgrade, number one, provides accuracy, and it provides real time data so that we can all look at this together. Because there's gonna be a lot of salesmanship to get this basin under control first before we tackle the bigger base. So that's what this is. This is really just for four meters, four locations. Number one, to put a logger and modem in the pump station to send it out into the Boulder, Colorado, onto a major server. And three additional meters that surround the basin that comes in from Dairy Township. So we take one meter, we'll take that data, subtract out the three additional meters that come into that basin. That's what the borough contributes. So we want to make sure that we have good, accurate data to solve that. And like I said, this is only four, four meters. So you see a price in here, and that's a purchase price. I'm not one that really wants to walk before I crawl. You already have fifteen meters, so I want you to recognize the math to this. And there is a rental price in this proposal as well. So being sensitive to finances, we also looked at a rental price and a five year, over a five year span here, the length of the consent order. We're looking at a rental price of twenty-four thousand dollars a year, which is about the same price as purchasing the equipment new. You guys already own meters, so it's pretty much a wash. But I also want to be sensitive to the current budget, the current expenses, whether you want to rent, whether you want to buy. So a hundred twenty-seven thousand dollar outlay initially versus rentals of twenty-four thousand a year over the next four years is, is what we looked at on the acquisition of meters just for this base. Because I do want to emphasize, there are additional meters coming down the pipe as part of the consent order on the other, the other interconnections between Granville and, and the balance of Dairy Township. So there is some, some options there that we looked at.
Is there any difference in maintenance costs to buy or rent?
Big ma, big difference. If, if something goes wrong and you own the equipment, you're on the hook for the maintenance. Now, we did factor in an allowable maintenance when we looked at the five year span. So we did bring in, if you own this, you gotta send it back to a, back to the factory to get it certified under your expense. If you rent it, it's on the agency that's, that's your renting front. So yes, there is a big factor on the maintenance, own versus rent. If you rent it, the problem is on them. And that's one of the reasons I really, I steer clear of owning. I've had too many clients be disappointed that they have to do maintenance within a year and a half, two years of purchasing the meter, and it's a pretty big bucks. So I've had clients that are disappointed on, because of the maintenance. All of a sudden, the meter goes down, you gotta send it back, you don't have a spare, so there is, that's disappointing.
This is the only way we can monitor?
Yes.
Can't do a manual?
You currently have meters out there that are basically doing a manual approach. But they're not as accurate and they're not, they're not gonna be what I'll call justifiable information. Because this is an upgrade into the technology, an upgrade into non-contact sensors. Non-cont, a contact sensor subject to a debris buildup. He showed you the rags. Well, the same saying, rags come down, they get hung up on, on the probe that sits in the bottom of the pipe. The upgrade doesn't have a probe that sits in the bottom of the pipe. It's a radar that shoots a radar beam from the surface. So there's, it's a non-contact to the sewer. Debris goes by, it's unaffected. The current technology is very impacted by debris. It can be, you know, a rag gets hung up and all of a sudden it's getting a false signal. And you don't know that until you go out there and do your maintenance and, you know, you have to do that much more regularly to get accurate data. So you can clean it today, all of a sudden a rag comes through tonight. You don't visit the site for a week, you got a week's worth of useless data. The new technology avoids that, and it's, it's non-contact. So that's what that's all about.
But the rentals, they come out on a set schedule to do the maintenance?
Yeah. We're gonna be here, Eads is gonna be here throughout this program as we get started in the consent order. We're gonna be here quite often. So we're gonna be in charge of that. And that's all part of the consent order that's being negotiated.
Look at this.
Maybe this program is in the consent order as part of this whole activity.
Did you say this is the first part we should handle before we go somewhere else?
I, I think it is. And, and Tom had mentioned, and, you know, for years, the sewer, the sewer staff has meters sort of surrounding the borough. So where Granville comes in, you know, Dairy Township comes in down on the south end of town, they come in, they're off of Spinogle and, and off of their pump stations in, in five to seven connection points. What we found in our initial data review is that that Edgewater pump station and that red line down by the Nittany Gas Station, we have three or four sewer manholes that are overflowing every time it rains, and that's those SSOs that we're getting fined for. So what we're trying to do, step one is to clean that red line down behind Mount Rock Apartments. Because you might have a twelve inch pipe, and if there's three inches of fill in it, you've lost twenty-five to thirty percent of your pipe capacity. And then when it rains, it comes out of the manholes that much faster. So step one's gonna get that all cleaned and flushed out. They're already working on getting the pumps, you know, cleaned out and rehabbed, so they're pumping full capacity. So when it rains, it's not filling up the pump station and coming out the manholes, because now we're gonna be pumping at full capacity. And then when we get into the discussions and the renegotiations on the agreement, that is one of the primary points in the borough system where Dairy has a large contribution. Because, because if you, you guys know the Walnut Street, Spinogle Avenue portion, that's the borough up to Snidder Energy. So we have flow meter on Spinogle and flow meters up on Walnut Street that measure Dairy Township coming into the borough proper and those city blocks. Well, then, they flow in the same lines down to that pump station. And in order for us to determine how much of that flow is Lewis Town Boroughs, because they're combined, once they get to that borough line, we're gonna put an accurate, real time flow meter at the pump station, and we're gonna put accurate, real time flow meters upstream where Dairy Township comes into the borough. So you'll take this total, you'll, you'll take this total, you'll subtract Dairy Township at their connection point, and everything in between is Lewis Town Borough. And right now, you have meters that it's like a giant pen, it's a wand, and it's got a cord, and it lays in the bottom of the sewer pipe. And it's regulated by a pressure gauge as to how much water is in that pipe, is how much pressure's on that meter. And like he said, no matter how often you clean it, it could get dirty in an hour if something gets hung up on that probe in the pipe. And if I have a clump of toilet paper, it raises that water level an inch. That could be ten thousand gallons in a day of inaccurate flow. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna come in, hang these radar sensors on the manhole step. It's gonna shoot down into the flow channel that no matter how high up and down it goes, we always have an accurate flow. And then we can take point A and point B. And then we can take point A and point B, we can measure how much it's raining, and just watch those flows go up and down. And we'll be able to subtract out the difference and figure out exactly what the borough has.
The other point to consider, if you reviewed the actual consent order, there are conditions in that consent order that obligate you to notify DEP within four hours of notification. You know there's times where you're not staffed adequately. So to get a four-hour response time, you really need to have an electronic device in there. And these would be that electronic device that can send somebody a text message when the pump station's at a certain level. And that level is corresponding to an SSO. So there are time functions in the consent order where this meter can support the consent order. So we'll have the ability to go to DEP and say, this is how we're going to do it to you. So there's a big change in dollars for fines moving forward on a reported SSO on four hours versus 24 hours. The dollars change dramatically in the consent order.
Yeah, so if you guys are able to report your manhole overflows within that four-hour window, it is a $250 fine for every day that that manhole's overflowing. If we lag in our reporting over 24 hours, it's a $5,000 fine. And that's where this region, you know, we're focusing on these four meters right now. Those manholes that are overflowing, I mean, that's right in the middle. That's the whole point of this consent order. That our focus initially with borough staff is going to be to attack that region. The guys have been cammering on Spinogle already. They've been pulling downspouts out of the sewer system. I think they found one or two. And we're going to be working with them to inspect manholes, make sure that everything's tight within the borough system. And then we'll be able to utilize all the meters, the other meters that you guys have, and they might not be as sensitive areas yet. That the meters that you're using, those probes, are adequate to get the general flow. It's just that this, with the SSOs and the, you know, the sensitivity of this region, we wanted to make sure we had accurate data.
I have a question. If we start out with renting these flow meters, will we ever get an option to buy?
Anytime you want.
And the one...
That's why I mentioned about crawling before we walk, because you've got 15 of these out there. I think what I'm trying to do is introduce this better technology to the staff, see if the staff likes it, then make that decision about purchasing that. If the staff likes it and the council likes it, rather than just jump in and buy them right away, rent for six months. If you really like them, you're going to need to expand this out. So I think it's, yeah, it's a little bit of a try on a rental basis. That's why I'm recommending more on rental than I am jumping in and purchasing them. Because of the maintenance.
There would be an alert, we're going to second you, you guys?
I'll send it to Harrisburg, uh, the DEP. Everybody that wants it.
It essentially could go to anyone, but it would go to the operators, just like all their other pump, they have alarms for pump failures and things.
So they would deal with the damage?
They would be able to get, yep.
This 127, that's just from that pump station?
That's to buy it.
Yeah, so the 127 would be to purchase the four meters and all the computer controls.
Where's the four meters go?
Okay, so one will go at the pump station, and then the three would go at the connection points from where Dairy Township comes into Spinogle, so that we can isolate that region. So we have all that flow coming to it, and we can isolate Lewistown Borough's amount.
Well, the price makes more sense now if it's going forward, if not one.
Correct, exactly. Yep, and that's, like he said, it's the modem for the digital outread right to the computers. And I think it's a really good start. And I think the renting allows us to budget it out over five years, especially with what we're looking at.
So after five years, are they armed?
They aren't, but, I mean, I could see technology improving, that there could be a trade-in, and they would just upgrade them as part of our rental contract.
So with all this, with all this that's going on, and we've been throwing all this out in Dairy Township, have they been notified of what's going on? Are they up to speed, and have we had meetings with them yet?
So they have been notified. We sent correspondence about the consent order from DEP. I believe we shared the draft consent order that we sent in. We just received the final consent order, so I don't think that has formally been sent to them. But we are meeting later this month for our quarterly meeting with the two other authorities, at which point I think we're going to have a pretty full agenda. I know that you notified them, Kim, about the cleaning of the red interceptor line down behind Mount Rock Apartments, because that's a shared interceptor. It conveys their flows and our flows per the agreement. They pay their proportionate share of that cost of the interceptor maintenance. So we have been corresponding with them. We have not had a formal meeting yet.
They refused to meet with us until the 23rd of April.
Yep, every course one that we've sent, they've replied with, we'll address this at our meeting.
At the meeting on the 23rd of April.
Now, this price, is that installed? Is it $24,000?
No, that does not include it. Like, we would be installing that as part of our services related to the contract where we have the EDS.
Yeah, we are certified installers for the HAWK flow meters. They contract with us throughout the state to do that, so, yep, that's...
So, okay, so originally, this was a purchase of $127,816. I got it. If they want to change the rental, that's fine too. But I don't know what the dollar is to rent it. So the council has to approve a dollar figure tonight. What is it?
Well, right there, the $2,000 a month is for the three flow meters, if I can put that up. Line item number one for $450 a month for three units, that's two devices. Number one, it's the flow door that sits in the channel. The second piece is the modem that sends it out. It's a wireless phone, if you will.
So that's where the $24,000 comes from?
$2,000 a month.
$2,000 a month, just a monthly price.
I thought it was one lump sum.
So, no. Then, obviously, the rain gauge and a logger. Then the wireless interface module. You already have a meter at the pump station. You have a mag meter at the pump station. But we need a logger and an interface module to send it out remotely. So you already, we're taking advantage of the equipment you already have there in the form of a mag meter at the pump station. But we need a language barrier between that meter and a flow logger that puts it on to the web. So that, those three line items, that's what you would be renting on a monthly basis. So you'd be looking at $24,000 a year for $2,000 a month, times 12, it's $24,000, for the rental of the equipment necessary just to do that little sub-basin.
Versus around front amount.
Of 127, just to do that little basin. So it's a big difference.
And $24,000 a month puts us in good graces with DEP?
Oh, it's a year. It's a year, it's a year, but...
Or a year.
The typo.
So is this a CoStar's quote, or is this something that we have to go out to bid on?
Yeah, that would be, this is CoStar's quote.
Now, you said we rent it and you put them in. How much is it going to cost us for you to install? We're just giving pieces here, we need the whole piece.
Yeah, we're including that in our hourly rate code, so it's going to be part of what I and I work.
I want him to say that.
Yeah, that's part of our... And incidentally, we did get started in this basin to do a little bit more of a micro-management. We're tracing all the pipes and working in concert with Caitlin at the codes office. Because the one thing that we have to pick up yet out of this, out of all the borough, is a detailed mapping of the storm system. Caitlin, you want to help jump in here a little bit? We do still are going to have an obligation, not only look at the sanitary, but also the storm base, the storm system. There's a lot of mapping already done on the sanitary stuff. The mapping that's currently done on the storm's pretty weak. So we are going to be moving forward picking up the storm system from a GIS standpoint. Our guys are going to be marking and locating a lot of the storm facilities. I think Codes has the capability of interfacing with the GIS system and doing some of the final collection system or mapping of the storm system as part of the GIS system. So basically, what I'm saying is we're going to do as much as or as little as need to be done. Whatever can be passed into the borough's current work staff, we're more than happy to do that, even if it's just creating the mapping on the storm system. So we'll work together with the Codes office to help them create the storm system, but use our boots on the ground as eyes and ears to locate certain stuff. So, yeah, we're going to be doing a lot of work together with Codes and Caitlin on the GIS mapping as well. So we're going to do as much as or as little as we need to, and as directed by you folks.
And this is also part of that, LSA Grant had mentioned earlier that for the storm system, $600,000 have cut the cost on this.
But I like this one. I mean, when I first came to look in at this, the pump station creates an ideal situation to manage a very small portion of the borough. And we're going to focus on that. Number one, to get in good graces with the DEP. If we can solve this one, there's only 9,000 feet of sewer line in this basin that you're responsible, 9,000, right? That's a drop in the bucket compared to the rest of the system. So we're going to put a focus on this, and we're going to put a blitzkrieg on this particular basin to try to get this one fixed. A lot of this is going to be outside of your responsibility, though. So we want to make sure we have good data that says, we're good. Problems over there, okay?
Yeah, so if I can interject what Tom's saying, I don't think we can wait on that side of town for the grant that Kim's referring to. So I talked with the county, we can use their GIS software, and we can map that section of the storm with council's approval, with Kim's approval, whatever.
The radar for the next several months to get that basin under control.
So, Tom, what do you recommend council approve? This quote for $2,000 a month?
I do.
The second thing is, we can't approve it without a CoStar's contract number on this quote. So you need to resubmit it to me with the CoStar's contract number on there. So they can approve it tonight, but they will not sign it until we have a quote that has the CoStar's contract number on it.
Got you.
I need a motion to approve this?
Seven.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
How soon will you think you'll be able to start putting this thing in place, Tom? Next 60 days, 30 days?
Yeah, within 30 to 45 days. We'll get moving on this right away. I really would like to have this installed before we go to the next intermunicipal meeting.
Yeah, you won't have it installed by any...
These meters will come with a username and password. I will give this username and password to anybody that wants it. Okay, that's my goal, is to try to get it out before the intermunicipal meeting.
Caitlin, I think you had a good suggestion.
Yep.
With, you know, utilizing our resources wherever you can. EDS is a good partner of ours, and I know they'll work well with others. So that's a good suggestion.
Summer, did you have a question?
I just wanted to know if we could, can we split that charge with Dairy?
Yes.
Or is it all us?
No, we can split the charge with Dairy. Five, six, and seven are three handicap parking space requests. Not number eight, I have to do eight separately. So five, six, and seven. So this is the first time I haven't had time to go take pictures of the specific parking spots in town in over three years. Council's never denied one. So we do have the information from the applicants. It's in your council file. If you want to look at the HIPAA stuff, is, you can go in there and look.
What's the request exception to call?
That's number eight. I haven't gotten there yet. I mean, that's five, six, and seven. I'll get to eight in a minute.
Oh, okay.
So five, six, and seven. We need approval to put those signs in. We have the numbers, Matt, and I'll get those from Ben tomorrow. I think it was $478 every time I put a sign in. You know, they paid a $50 fee, and that's what it is for now. So we need approval for five, six, and seven to be placed.
Seven. Second.
Seven.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote.
All right, Heavy. So we'll get to number eight. So this lady is also requesting a handicap parking permit. She has requested the handicap parking permit. It's in the process, but she's going in for some major surgery. That's why she requested a handicap spot. Now, the exception to policy piece, Heavy, is across from her house, there's a spot in front of her house. I bet you I had a picture of it.
Is this up here, Kim?
Yeah, North Grand. It's already taken by somebody else, another handicap spot. Some guy parks there all the time. So it has to across the street. But her surgery is going to be pretty severe. Right now, those street is limited parking. She has to park it over at the library parking lot. So she can't get to the library parking lot and drive her car back and move it. So I met with, me and Caitlin went and met with her. I mean, this is on the up and up. So she's asking for exception to policy. She does have to move during the street sweep, because she can't, she can't move after the surgery. So she's asking for exception to policy for a while until she can heal up and then do this. Caitlin and I said we agree with her. We will come to council and see if we can get exception to policy.
Seven. She can use the one in front of her house, too.
She knows that, yeah.
Uh, we have a motion, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I mean, she called me crying, and I said, how about I just come and see you? So it's that serious, so we were okay with it. All right, so we have to vote to talk about number nine and number 10, because they were added after the agenda was published.
Can you pull it up on the screen?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Did you need this anymore, Lucas? You text me, you said you wanted this up. Are you good on this?
No.
Okay.
Good, thanks.
We get the agenda up, minimize it. And we're down to EMS stuff, so let's see. I'll put that under... I think this is what you're talking about, this one here?
Yep.
I can't blow it up anymore, it's the size it is. So basically, this is, I think we talked about this in finance, we talked about this, I think in law order, I can't remember. The bottom line is brought to council to discuss whether you want to approve this now to take effect on 1 January 2025. And this is basically the millage increase to get the amount collected in taxes to equal the amount of what would go to fame for the $45,000 a year.
Make a motion, we increase that?
They would have that at the end of this.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Can we raise it to an aye?
Yes. You can vote for .5 on that one. So what will happen is, Mark, is, you know, later on, you'll advertise it and stuff.
Do you want me to advertise it, like, now, or wait till the end of the year?
I think wait till the end of the year. Wait till the end of the year.
So it's approved now, it's one less thing to worry about.
Will you do that in November?
It's usually September. So, November, then advertising. All right. Number 10. So number 10 is the Mifflin County... We got this in at the last minute, too. This is, oh, wait, there's more stuff on here. So Mifflin County Kids Connection. You guys just voted to talk about nine to 10. That's, they do that every year on, basically, Market Street from the square down to Dorcas. And so we just need this approved for the kids. It's an event that they put on every year. It's pending, pending approval. So when you guys approve it, it's pending, pending approval, because they own Market Street.
Seven.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. The last thing would be executive session, which would be talking about summer help, lifeguards, meter enforcement, street sweep reinforcement. And then if you guys want to discuss it further when we come out, then we get a vote on the status. But you don't have to vote right now. I can't see that, I don't have any on that.
All right, we're going to go into executive session. Everybody leave. I don't know how long it's going to take, so...